Do you have an extra agenda?
Yeah.
Hi. Are we all set in online?
Yeah.
Okay, we might as well get started with the pre-meeting for Monday, November 22. Yes, we have. The here's one application item on the agenda with two table items. The two table items are definitely nobody's return.
One of them is definitely the crank next month. The other one we have not received response on.
Okay, okay, well, might as well start off with the one item that we we know is here and that'd be Dolan subdivision. I recuse myself from that application when it was here at Sketch Plan. My firm worked for the architectural engineer on that property. So I'll do that again. Also, leave it for the rest of the board to discuss.
But question about that because Derek was our vice chair and we did we ever do any difference? He resigned. Did we ever replace him?
So no, our historical process has always been to move down in terms of longevity. So Rick will be our next most senior member if Rick is willing to accept.
Yeah. So then do we have a core? I mean, I guess right now it's only a working meeting.
So we are still in pre-meeting. We do have a forum. I have not heard from Loretta and I thought she would be here tonight. If not, then it is up to the applicant. He is allowed to choose to come back if he wants to with the absence of a full board. Because even with Jim accusing himself, we will be down to four members if Loretta shows up.
If there are not.
And without Loretta, we'll still have three members and that will be enough for a forum.
Yeah.
This has been on the agenda now since May.
It was not tabled previously, so it was added to the agenda when they submitted their their final plan.
Yeah, so that was back in May and June. So at that point, this it was determined to be a type two action procedure. It was determined to be a minor subdivision and it was approved and then there were some comments. And then the applicant had brought forward some new information. And then throughout our review, there's a few while it's pretty pretty straightforward. There's a few additional pieces of information the staff would like to see such as there's a slight difference between the applicant information and the address on the zoning information table. And the it is in a water waterfront overlay district, just to see the zoning there. We already spoke with our building inspector and he said he said there is no variances needed. So once again, it's in all the very all the non-conforming is pre-existing. So we'll be able to move forward with that. I think the only other thing is the major one is DPW's recommendation for the before final approval is to see the water water utilities, sewer utilities, in case there's any need for e-surfs. That was the only comment we received from EPW. So the pretty straightforward.
I guess my only question is going to be in regard to the New York State land that's owned by the Barge Canal. My question is going to be, is there any long term plan for that leased property? And it's more in reference to the Barge Canal. If the Barge Canal has, you know, any interest in terminating the lease agreement, I don't know.
Not that we are aware of anything, anything specific along those lines. So at this time, there's nothing that would that's on the docket or prepared for or planned for that would impact this. The subdivision.
Any thoughts or questions? We're discussing.
Yeah, I read about it and I don't have any questions about it.
What is the mean high watermark?
That'd be a good question for engineer that where that line is. Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate time of meeting.
Yeah.
Put it down exactly. It's a good question.
Oh, I guess I've got one question. Sorry. What's what are the terms of the lease? For the portion of land from New York to Chaldon? Do we know?
Brought up previous.
Oh, sorry.
If there's any long term plan or if there's any plan on the state Barge Canal corporations, you know, in their futuristic plan. Yes, they're going to tend to keep it or if they have alternative uses for that area. So.
Does he does he pay the state to have that land?
I from years ago, I remember I I know nothing currently. There's there's a nominal amount of money that's exchanged for the use of that land.
You don't know how much?
Years ago I did, but I don't know if that figure is appropriate right now.
Just to clarify, that lease piece of property is in any of the considerations associated with the application? Or am I missing something?
No, it's completely.
Yeah. I'm just I'm just curious as to, I mean, it's a big chunk of land down there and Wilcox Dock has become a lot more developed, especially now that we've got the boat slips down there. And but you very clearly are not allowed to go south. On. And I honestly didn't realize that it wasn't his land, that it was still state land. Because I go down there all the time with my dogs and I always thought that was his land.
Who's wasted for a number of years? Show them off.
Yeah, yeah. I had not realized that. I was just curious as to what the terms of the lease were.
Sure. So I guess we do have other business that'll be addressed at the conclusion and the last of this application. Probably number one is our December meeting and date and schedule. For everybody. I know that I will be out of town on the 27th.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Tuesday.
Know of any current applications that are definite for that day?
Just as of now, Latin bills, the item number three on the table, the 127th Court Street, historic site review. The applicant has dropped off new updated information. We are currently in the process. At least we at least just sent that to ship out within that 30 day time period. So we get a response by that by that meeting date. So that's the only one for certain. The deadline is the 29th. So, yeah.
So I don't know if there's any other numbers. It definitely no other, I think.
I will not be here, but I but I could attend 27th, but I could attend on Zoom, which I thought that we at least our draft bylaws accepted that I would still be allowable. Allow applicants to chime in on Zoom now.
Yeah.
Actually, I didn't think about that. But if that is an open option, I I potentially could do that as well.
Yeah. So that is an option specifically the executive order from the governor right now allows it without without much restriction. Under normal circumstances, you know, non-pandemic era, it is actually still also allowed. The only difference is under non-pandemic pandemic times, we would have to post location where you are zooming from. And you would have to allow anybody to attend. I doubt if you're in town, that anybody's going to show up at your door to attend from that location.
That would be interesting. But that's wait.
I'm sorry, but that that requirement is waived right now.
Right, you do it that way?
Yes. And it's again, it's the 28th, not the 27th.
What's on Tuesday the 28th?
Yeah, the 27th is a city.
Um, in terms of other business tonight, I mean, we just discussed Rick as being the vice chair. But this is only working session. We need to, in the past, I think that we have voted.
We have not.
We haven't?
No.
No. Okay. Well, then do we need to do that in the meeting to make somehow make that?
Um, I mean, it's not really a formal appointment.
Okay.
All I can say is we have not done that in the past with Marissa, John, or Derek have ever done it. So.
Okay, then I don't think we've ever solid, we have not still solidified any kind of policy or
Right.
Procedure to do that yet.
There's a few circumstances with the bylaws that have to be clarified with the city attorney before we can forward the bills. We're going to do that by the end of the year. Hopefully, if we're able to have bylaws, then we'll do it. Hopefully, our organization will be in January.
Another nice way to start, but you're fresh with new ground rules instead of.
I've got a question. Am I no longer an alternate? Or is this just for tonight?
So.
We are working on that. Right now, the mayor with appointments and any any impact with members. He's given us guidance that he wants the recommendations to come from the planning board directly. So we have drafted a letter for Jim to review and which would promote you to full member if you so choose.
I haven't heard about it. Aaron actually said that he was interested in being on the planning board. So I thought that, you know. He said, wow, I wish I could do that.
All right. Too bad he's a town resident.
Oh.
I just paid a lot of taxes.
He'd be refused from almost every meeting anyway.
Yeah, that's the truth. Okay, I I was kind of surprised when I saw my name tag. So I was just kind of wondering.
We've always had your name tag.
No, but mine always said alternate.
No.
Yeah, dude.
I swear I haven't ordered a new one.
Okay, you know, and I might, I guess my vision's worse than I thought.
So so with that said, Ethan sort of alluded to it that we are also with Loretta being promoted, still two members short. So Eric has requested, maybe you can summarize a little better.
Yeah, essentially, we're going to want to advertise now that if, you know, the council does go ahead with the recommendations of the board to promote you to full time, a full member, a regular member, sorry, we would like to advertise for the two vacant positions and we.
The two alternates.
Yeah, we have draft language and we're working with our community engagement coordinator Courtney to advertise on social media, contact during the press release, and any other outreach needed. Just trying to cast the wide net. Really what we're looking for is, you know, a letter of interest, you know, where their address and any qualifications they deem relevant.
Will that announcement say anything about copyrights to members from the wards where we are?
So that's, we did not include that language. However, we are aware that wards one and two are deficient and that that would be a priority if we receive, you know, three applications or four applications. And, you know, two of them are one and two of them are from wards one and two preference over because based on our rules. But yeah, so we, once we advertise and start receiving, we the goal is to feel all to the rest of the board, all those applications for the board to decide and make that final recommendation and coming in the form of a letter from the chair. And then the that will get passed on towards the council and then they will take action as they as they see fit. So and if you also have any individual, if you have any individuals who are interested or might be interested, definitely have them reach out.
Send a letter of interest.
Yeah.
And do the do the counselors know that we're searching and the ward one and two counselors help like they know their districts can somehow get this on their radar stream.
I don't know if the council is fully aware. However, if that's something that the community engagement coordinator decides that's appropriate, then they can help use that to advertise. On that, we're just hopefully, you know, fill the board to have a full full seven members and keep moving on.
But just to clarify, Ward one is the south end of town?
Ward one is the old base.
Yeah.
Does the old base, Ward two is the south end of town? So the old base will move down to Hamilton, that vicinity.
Is we think anything south of Broad Street?
We hit both of those words.
Yeah. And then if we received, I mean, ideally, we would receive applications from wards one and two. However, if not, we'll just, the board will decide based on that letter of interest and any relevant qualifications for that recommendation.
I don't I don't think we've had any voting from Ward two in a long time. That I can recall.
How long have you been on the board?
I've been on since 2012. So but I but I know that on Ward one, you know, we had Jesse Tyler. That area, we had Bill Ferris.
Yeah.
That's great from that. Okay. So isn't is the new base part of Ward? Ward one or Ward two?
The new base is part of Ward one, I want to say. I think Ward two is closer to the like main mill, South Catherine. I can't remember. Are you Ward six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rick, what do you?
I'm over by the hospital.
Ward four.
Which one are we, five? Okay, so we got two from five. Yeah, we got two from the same street.
So we've got three through six represented. Just Ward one and two, we don't have, we haven't had for a while, nothing to go left. He was the last one from Ward one.
Well, I guess, you know, there'll be advertising out with anybody from the board that's identified, anybody I think might be interested, that's what happened. What can I mean?
If we're unable to find anybody from Ward one or two, that's okay. We just need to make an effort. And I think it would be good to have somebody from Ward one and two, but if not, it doesn't mean we can't, you know, look outside that those wards.
Before organizational meeting, can we give us standing or rules that we have?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll circulate those in December.
I guess also I believe the I had seen the the potential agendas for next year. Did that?
The schedule?
Yeah, did that get fully?
Yeah, so it went through the zoning board and they have approved everything. If you want to just pass it then, whoever, I think a couple of you grabbed them already. But that's the schedule for next year. I know Jimmy, you had reviewed it. The zoning board chair and Joe have reviewed it from the building inspector's office. So they're all set down there as well now. So I just got that confirmation last week.
Okay, everything ended up staying generally consistent.
Changed.
Yeah.
For that.
So the 28th is the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
But most importantly, I just want to make sure the board was, there's this schedule published now?
It's not published yet. I figured I'd give it to you guys, yeah, see it before it's sent out.
Almost published. Yeah, we have copies of it.
I know we had some issues with timing between special meetings and this these board meetings. So we'll, when the council does the organizational meetings, I'm assuming they're going to follow a similar standard to what they had last year. If that changes, well, we'll alert the board. If there's any impacts or any changes where we have to be next door or have to maybe move the time back.
Update on the comprehensive plan?
Yes, the we had finally received an updated copy from the consultants. So we're looking at her doing that and pushing that forward to the pack after after the holidays. That's where that's where we are now. That went through several several rounds of little revisions. And so there's, I think there's a just good draft for the public to actually, there's still multiple sides, you know, depending through the pack. There's also two more processes with the public viewing, seeing how many comments regarding the conflict.
Do you have like potential dates for pack meetings?
That's not on schedule. Probably not until each January.
Yeah. Our office has some time off. There's some impacts to our availability in December. So that's going to delay a little bit there and the consultants as well for having that pack.
We are, I think, 5:58 now, so.
Yeah. Is there any other comments for the pre-meeting? We do have two minutes and we need to either need a break before we head into the regular agenda. I'll give it just another minute.
Yeah. Jim, you had a good point now that we did talk about the other business after you freeze yourself. If you would like to just leave, that's up to you.
I'll probably stick around just to make it official, seem like a minor review. Okay, with that said, it is six o'clock. So I'll call the regular planning board meeting for November 22nd, 2021 to order. We can all start rising for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your public, for your states, one nation, under God, indivisible, and for the free
At least if I can have a vote, hopefully. Yes.
Rick Perry?
Yes.
Rich Carter?
Yes.
Rick Purvich? Loretta Riedman?
Yes.
We do have a light agenda today. Application which is in attendance and two two applications that are tabled and won't be returning this month. So we'll start with application number one, which is plenty more application, 2021-11 Dolan subdivision. As I discussed in the pre-meeting, this was an application during sketch plan, which I have recused myself. My firm had involvement with the property for architecture and engineering. So I will continue with that and hand it over to the vice chair.
Before we get into presentation, we do only have four votes or voting members at tonight's meeting. They have and does have the option, obviously, of without the benefit of the full board being able to postpone. Okay. That being said, our agenda item is the Dolan subdivision, 14 point view terrace. With that introduction, like that, ask the staff to introduce their presentation.
So we have a minor subdivision of approximately separating 0.47 acres from tax map parcel 207.12 dash three dash six and remaining lands to merge with tax map parcel 207.12 dash three dash five located 14 point view terrace, zone R1, it's tax map parcel ID 207. Six applicant is Julie Dolan and the plan preparer is RMS. It's just that overlook. It's a little tough to see actually. The two parts, the two parcels being subdivided, highlighting the yellow, the lighting here is a little tough. Just the zoning map showing it in the R1. So Google image showing the satellite image of the site. And the actual subdivision which you've seen in your packets dividing it. The zoning table for between the requirements and the R1. The lot one and lot two, the building inspector has reviewed this application and determined no variances were needed. And that's brief presentation there. Once again, as we spoke in the working session, this was brought to the board for preliminary review back in May 2021. It was determined to be a tight It was determined to be a type two action. There was, it was also determined, it was approved and determined to be a minor sub at the preliminary level. So they came back, they provided some additional information that the staff was looking for. Um, the two, there's a few parts, pieces of information that were in the application analysis and the staff comments that we have regarding items such as correcting some information between the zoning information and applicant information. The identify any flood zones within the parcel, the consideration of showing all setback lines with proposed proposed parcels and the approximate location of water and sewer main laterals and any other public details. That was for staff, for others, department comments, that was DPW's main comment was that any require, recommended the applicant, you show the approximate water main and lateral service for the proposed parcels in case utilities may be required. That is, that's the end of, let's say your first act comments unless there's anything I missed. I'll now leave it to the board to discuss with the applicant.
The applicant tonight is Miss Rappaport's patient.
We came before you, Ethan said, uh, several months ago, uh, basically Julie Dolan was looking to subdivide a piece of property, maintain the twenty five foot strip along the south side of the property that goes out to the lake. And the, the remaining lake fundage to her father would be favorites of yours. Uh, would you need to come out that piece of property and look the area up for the father of the property that is familiar with, that Mark Dr. He actually has very little or to no actual weight fundage, uh, that, that frankly, she, the line, the fundage is actually owned by the state of New York. So currently has a lease agreement. So he owns the land, but obviously it's not his, so you're starting to think about that. It's primarily the state, they take their way across the US, so. To face the subdivision simply gives father some big fundage to go with his hands. Uh, there's no new structure to be proposed while we're on, uh, read through the staff's comments. Uh, we have some minor tables that point out, uh, some progress in those.
Are you prepared to identify questions of concern by staff that, uh, discuss them tonight, uh, even though they are in sketch form?
This part, yeah, I think, you know, the conversation just happened with the performance through them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one wish, uh, we had twelve point view terrace and type of fourteen, so obviously we'll you know, street name.
Oh, yeah, Aaron, actually.
Yeah.
If these have to take me up, yeah.
Like, right, so I'm, there was a couple typos, uh, in the zoning table as far as the street number, uh, and the that obviously we will correct with the revised map. We should see those comments this morning, so we'll address those. Uh, as far as, uh, you know, the mobile districts, it really doesn't change the application, it wouldn't change any of the stuffs. Practice because if you don't want to build anything, this was not being inserted there. Uh, what happened, we'll pour in water sewer, we'll clean there, I just totally mapping that will provide those locations on our public domain also. Yeah, there's some very minor comments, uh, that we are fully free to make those changes that Ethan brought up. Staff, if there's any other comments or words, like other comments, we'll have you to address them.
Is the land encumbered at all by, uh, these events or rights ways?
Nope, the only reason, uh, those provided in the sketch map is that the piece of land that the father's purchasing is currently on easement. So he has the right to get to his dock here, the cost of easement, that easement will go away, turn out he owns full title to it. So that's the only easement that encompasses these properties. Uh, as far as, uh, I think maybe showing flood plain, uh, really, you know, we're long lake champagnes, so we've identified the high water. Uh, we're happy to show the elevation one or two. Really a flood stage for lake chaplain, the high waters.
Say that last bit.
Me, me having one for lake champagne, always by the interstate is elevation nine nine.
But you may not have that point two.
Well, so you have, right, so one oh two is the flood insurance mapping. Yeah, so there's mean high water, flood stage, and then for insurance purposes, FEMA says anything built within, or below elevation one or two requires their review. So again, it doesn't affect, there's enough relief thing and that would say, you look at, it's kind of hard to see on this map, but the boundary line is basically at the top of a six or seven foot high bank and then probably slopes downward toward the lake. So that elevation's way out here, away from all these structures.
Aaron, do you have any knowledge of the lease agreement between?
I've seen the, uh, this going to parties. Uh, I heard, uh, how great that board, I honestly don't know where, what the financial agreement is, uh, but I know that that he has a long term, that's simply safe. So yeah, right, so I mean, that's this land north of that angle, so it doesn't affect what we're recording your site.
Does the easement, the access easement for the dock, you know, does that run with the deed?
There is easement in the father's, so the daughter's property is encumbered by easements, allowing the father to use a piece of that land. So now that you have that piece of land being added fee to the deed, the, the easement basically goes away because what you used to use as a easement area, now
If, 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 if we adjust the property lines and the daughter sold her property, would the easement, would the property still be encumbered with a new owner being encumbered by the agent?
No, because the area that was affected by easement has been now combined with the father's piece of property. So the easement was done over the entire lake, it was only the, the forest. So that goes away. So if she sells her piece of land, the new buyer is gonna own all this on the front, that's twenty five foot strip out to the lake, you know, what the easement's on it.
Yes, sir, I wasn't clear on my question. If the, if the property line is not adjusted, is the father's, a- and the daughter sells her property, is the easement, is the property still covered by the?
Yes. Yeah, so if we don't move forward with the subdivision, that even runs with the land.
The twenty five foot strip is, is that gonna be a new deep, uh, easement on the lower end or?
No, that is, that twenty five foot strip is owned completely by this piece, it's kind of like a large flag shaped wall. So how should, huh, owned it be at twenty five foot strip always a lake? So they don't have to get any easements from anybody to walk down the water or back.
And the dock, as I thought I heard you say, is owned by Dr. Dolan?
Correct.
Isn't that dock access by within that twenty five?
It's, uh, well, so in existing condition, it's a seasonal dock, so it's basically where it was at the time you surveyed it. So we can advise him that he's put a little further north from spring. It's not, it was the feature that we look at when we serve it.
There is one thing interesting about, uh, a lot of the city lots that, uh, are on the lake. That's, you'll notice frequently that lot lines actually extend under the water.
Right.
More so like those markets.
Normal fee, right. So the state of New York only claims title ownership to low water. So the area between low water and high water normally runs with the upland landowner. Although any work that takes place in that area, the state has jurisdiction over an environmental view. But, so the idea is they own out to ninety three point to break something like, yeah, low water, so.
Further questions?
So we're, I'm curious where where the lots come together at the funny angle?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that, that apex of that angle there, that's right, is, that's right, or what is the line that extends?
Easternly?
Yes.
Correct. So if you look at the title for this piece of property, they, they only shape out to low water, it's out here.
Yeah.
The lot to the north owns similarly that line out to low water. But the state came in and, you know, basically took that piece to the north. So if you look at the, or I said, so Dr. Dolan's piece of property to the north, you know, he, oh, here's high water, but the lake's out there. So technically his property doesn't even touch the water.
Yeah.
So that large piece of property does not own anything, doesn't have any legal rights, any access to get to the water. And that's why he got the easement from the neighbor, so he could get to the water.
Yeah.
And this, the limitation needed by easement does not feel all that piece of property title.
I'm curious, right, and, and we talked about this last time you came. Right, uh, you know, one thing we try to prevent is irregular lot shapes. Right, and so we've got this flat hole shape on the southerly lot, which potentially creates problems for the future of these land. Right now we have a father and daughter, really, two moms, right? In the future, potentially a problem where we got people accessing what looks like the backyard of the southerly mall, right? Is is, is there a way to adjust the lot lines and give and still give lake access that doesn't create such an irregular second block? And prevent that?
Yeah.
Uh, originally, we actually had a sketch that we provided to the landowners that kind of followed that northerly angle that kind of came in a little bit, that, that helped out the angle, so it kind of helped out a little bit. Uh, but the owners basically said, no, we really, because, like, so it's interesting here is that there's this bank of like seventy eight feet right here, topography wise. So basically the bank is the edge of the property and that's what they wanted to use as a defined limit. Uh, so it was actually a fence that we are here, so the fence is actually west of that lot. The property on the basis of that banks, so that person's yard is defined by basically the edge of the bank. So we looked at different options with the applicants and this is what they moved forward with this. I mean, it's not uncommon, you know, because if you look at now, you know, you look at that large piece property in the north, they don't have any rights to the water. So, you know, giving them the rights to water, you know, when it's done, it's all you need, but if we actually go back to the tax map, uh, there's actually several of those in this area. You can see just here to south, it has one that comes like a wine glass, you know, or similar thing. So it's, it's something that's, you know, it is, you know, unique in a way, but it's not uncommon to have done, especially when you have, you know, lake access and trying to get people rights to the water.
Is there a way to do it where you would just carve out their access to the water along the shore a little, you know, little cutout piece instead of the, the large flat hole?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think Dr. Dolan was, you know, the agreement is that if he's purchased it from his daughters, like he wanted to gain that larger spot that he could pull the dock up on and have, you know, wider access out the lake, just because the second is currently, you know, he does not own any lake fundage. You know, what we present to you is after, you know, a couple of different species, what the owners, what they're actually looking for.
A lot of houses on Cumbell and Dab have have those strips going down to the lake.
Right, because I know, and you remember, we actually were involved in this one here, this is actually a cul-de-sac original. So there was actually a centerpiece of the cul-de-sac, which was then merged with the abandonment of part of the city street. And then a little structure, it's actually has a brand house on it, so. And still, I mean, if you look at the size of the lot, you know, they have there, you know, it's very similar to the lot, so it's not like we're squeezing that lot down. You know, that lot along the road is still, still much of all the other large roads we've ever been to.
Since you worked on the lot.
Yes.
How wide is the stem of the lot?
I'm sorry?
How wide is the stem of the lot?
Uh, I want to say it was at twenty five or thirty feet, whatever it was.
Sketch, Aaron, you, you show a freestanding deck that could be a slave bond with the daughter.
Right, we've noted that, that, that needs to be removed, so that starts to be a four rules. Talk about if they don't use it, it never uses, falling apart, they figure we'll just get rid of it. Because we talked about actually pushing the boundary line easily, so you fold it on a piece of property, they said, no, no worry about it, like, park on the beach, the banks, and then we will remove that little piece of deck. So that's part of the approval would be that has to be removed in order for this product to perform.
I have a question for staff, um, you said the building inspector had to do a verbal.
Right, right there. Yeah, that is correct. At least can speak more to that.
That's really it. I mean, I questioned the backyard a bit, um, but he, but Joe confirmed that there is no variance needed. Something about average and I kind of lost it after that.
Yeah, determine the average lot width.
What will the setback be from the back of the house to the property?
Your?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, so.
Yeah. As at seventy four point five.
Did we do any secret action first?
Approved it as a type two action.
Classified.
Classified.
You did the classification. Just made, um, is there any follow-up secret action?
No, I mean, I don't know.
No, with a type two action, it includes the secret process. There's no other action necessary.
Can I only ask that question because as, there's been some slight modifications? That modification? What do you need to? Where do we need to modify it?
Right, no, based on section six seventeen point five, C fourteen sixteen? I have to make it up. The type two action list, uh, this would be considered like a lot line adjustment and it's a, it's just a type two action. So there's not really much they can do other than it, it's really just a lot line.
A lot of the changes that were made since the last submission, a lot of it was also just addressing questions that was brought by the board and staff at the time.
Just want to make it part of the.
Be a lot more comfortable with this one if, if we're not creating after regular lab shape. Then that gives the northern property owner the right fence with what is the southern, what what really appears to be the southern owner's backyard, it creates sets up future problems. I think there are ways to meet the objectives in a different adjustment.
I guess, so my, um, you know, spewing this property line, if there was an angle coming in or something like that, if you look at the position of the house, from how you adjust the, if you look straight now, it's either your own strip to the right, or your own angle across with that strip to the right. So I mean, no matter what, there's going to be really no way that you look straight out back to south, you're going to cross that property. So I mean, I can see is the house was more of an angle, and you kind of kept the view shed completely there, but again, no matter how you adjust that line, that house is looking across that property line, sort of like.
The the Google map image has that temporary dock much further to the north?
Right, as I mentioned, it's a seasonal dock.
Yeah.
So it gets pushed in and out, and therefore.
Yeah, the point that I'm making is that why not just carve out access to that at the water edge of the property?
You're saying just give the neighbor to the north twenty five feet? I mean, I guess that's the point.
No, to run, in order to run, you want to flip back to the, um. Just south of where the property lines come together, at the apex of that town hall, right, why not just, why not? Is there a reason? I mean, unless I am misunderstanding.
Big up.
Yeah. Right, why not just carve it out here? Why are we working all the way up in this houses that are?
That's usually underwater.
Well, I mean, your, you know, your high water's probably here, so it's going to be here, you know, that's, you know, so you're going to take some of it. You know, and really, you know, the gentleman to the north wants to have, you know, a larger yard. I mean, it's really not developable, there's no plans to do any development. He's just like to ensure that it's his, and it stays open, maintain usably, not having anything blocking his view of the water.
You're not really configured anything, right? Why those two brackets?
Right, I mean, you're right, they mentioned, you know, most of this is covered by the easement, so he's just basically getting rid of the easement, and now he's going to own it.
But in his ownership of that, you know, in what is the southern home's backyard, right? Did he's now able to put a, to put an April fence? About privacy fence, one way in the future will not be future, somebody else is going to buy it.
Does, um, Aaron, does that, the line, the north-south line behind Julie's house? I mean, I've seen it a ton of times, how how approximately far is that drop? I mean, that drop's probably a good.
It's a good six, seven foot drop.
Yeah, at least, at least, I mean, it changes, you know, with the weather.
Right, so this basically, you know, the deck starts at the top, and then, you know, that's the bank, so.
Right, and so even if, you know, even if, you know, an owner to the north decided to put up a fence.
Really don't do much, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, even if they put up a six-foot fence, it's going to come to almost the level of the base of.
Their yard.
Yeah, their yard, I mean, it's, it's not going to be visible. I mean, they'd have to, if they decided they were going to build a new house, they were build, and, you know, build, um, an extra building and put it right there, you know, that's something that would have to be approved, and.
I guess, you know, similar in that argument. You know, if we didn't buy it, this neighbor could have put the fence right here, you know, whether he was easement, completely kind of blocked his, so. I guess, you know, it's something that kind of go both ways, you know, this is just sure that he now. So blocked, it was kind of, you know, I mean, I understand your concern, but now it's reversal, but I'm going to make sure that doesn't happen there.
I mean, I.
I have a similar concern that you have, right, that, you know, if someone wanted to construct another structure on the lot.
Right.
Not only does it, with that need of permission, but there's a significant zoning variance having multiple principal structures on the same lot.
Right, they basically have to tear down the old house and start over again. The other thing is that realistically, once you go down that bank, if you go there and look, I mean, that soil wouldn't hold a pup tent, never mind a house, you'd be talking about someone who's, it's swamp. It's, you know, and it's just wild grass that grows down there, it's, you know, I mean, their biggest struggle is probably the invasive grasses that that are growing along the edge of the lake that are taking out the view, and you go to Wilcox, and the invasive grasses are taking over on the north end of Wilcox. And, you know, that's prime real estate for those grasses, because it's just swamp. That's the, that's going to be the challenge. So that'll be Jill's problem. You know, and but yeah, nature is is going to be more of a problem, I would imagine, than any other structures going into that area that would block a view. You you just, you can't build anything down there, it's just going to sink. Like, you know what, Georgia Pacific, when you go down there, you know, all the grasses?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, to understand.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's, you know, so someone would have, I mean, I don't even know what it would take for someone to decide they were going to be able to somehow build something that would be.
But I'm not, I'm not sure what, how that intersects with this question of about the lot shapes, right?
Well, it's unusual, I mean, I'm just throwing out that, you know, there are an awful lot of houses on Cumberland Avenue, who, that's how they have lake access. And, um.
Like I said, it's not, it's something that hasn't been more prominently discussed in that immediate community. There's actually, for the south, you know, houses, lots that actually have these just across the roadside neighbor.
Right.
You know, landwalks, so you have to drive, you know, share driveway to get behind those.
And then have like access.
But those, but those easements are adjustments to the property line that then make them irregular shape and potentially total. I mean, easements always pose issues in the future, I understand that, but there's an easement that exists here and now. I mean, it's, it's, so I guess essentially what I'm having trouble with is that we have a, we have a situation that now seems to be fairly pro pacetic, and that we have landowners that establish an easement arrangement so that they both have lake access. And we're moving to an arrangement where we're creating an irregular lot, an irregular lot shape and potential conflict between the lot shapes and and ownership of.
I mean, you know, certainly, you know, easements are not as strong of an argument as the title.
Correct.
So, you know, if I have an easement, I can, you know, put an act of stop, or let's go to court to have that moved, you know, battle that. You know, the worrying of the easement says I have to give you access, okay, if you're more, I can put a fence along that line, you can walk around the fence to get access to it. So it's, you know, only fee title to it, negates any of that gray confusion or potential, you know, right now is great, that's the dollar. All right, you know, the neighbor, or say the dog sells, and I have an easement across somebody I don't get along with, he can go through a lot of steps to make my life miserable, where if I actually own it outright, and don't negate that, so really, you know, subdivision, transferring the fee title, so it negates that future.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that the where this property line is going to be cut, I think raises potential, raises it equally investing problems, and that there may be ways to cut this property line closer to the lake, or if it doesn't.
Right, well, I mean, but seriously, if you look at the property, as I said, you know, if you look at the property right now, the property line is at the edge of a steeper bank. Where if you move, let's say halfway between that bank and the lake, now it's just kind of a flat grass area, and there's a line in the middle, so there's no defining natural feature that says, hey, this is my land, that's their land, where the bank gives you that natural feature of separation.
I don't think I'm going to convince you. You're working with your landowner, I'm just telling you what I'm uncomfortable with in making that, no, because.
Right, and the key to it is, you know, what's being proposed is fully permitted under the ordinance and meets the zoning requirements. So we're not asking for a variance, we're not asking for any deviation from your laws, this complies, so it's a boundary adjustment that fully complies with the ordinance.
And on the flag shaped lot in the table of lot size and open space and all. So where, so which, uh, yeah. So what are we calling, what are we calling one and two, existing and one and two?
One is the house lot, two is the land to be sold to father.
And existing is?
The way it exists, so another reduction of the harness by ordinance, this is what is required. Uh, this will be existing conditions on the property, and with the subdivision, this becomes the new. So basically, the idea is, you know, you look at it, you know, we're not changing existing, we're not deviating from the code, any of the existing conditions. And it really comes down to this point here, which is the existing side yard. So if you look at the house that the applicant owns, it is within plus proximity of her north property.
Which is the, which is the flag shaped property?
Uh, two.
Why? And the and what percentage of open space will be left on the flag shaped property? It doesn't look ninety three point five, it doesn't look like that can be right.
Yeah, I think.
For the flash, why do we have an N?
I think lot two is the flagship.
The lot two. Oh, well, yeah.
What vacant, what vacant?
So, lot two is when we subdivide, when we create lot two, it's not beyond, lot two is the biggest property.
And you're only, you're only identifying lot two, I think Kurt's question is the lot that remains from the subdivided land.
So this twenty five foot.
That's the flag.
This all does the flag.
And which lot is that on the sheet?
That is lot one according to that, so.
So ninety three percent will be open space? That doesn't look like that can be right.
Permanent number, but again, the order is fifty, so if you go back to the map and look at fifteen, look at from full plan of the house to the road, that's one fifty percent.
I see what you're, how you identify, we're not identifying shell dollars. We're only identifying the two parcels that have been divided. Is that what you're saying?
Right, is that right?
The table, the table.
The table is going to find the two lots in subdivision.
With them.
Right, we can adjust, if you'd like, we could actually add I confirm at ninety three number, or I'll come up with a third table, it tells you what father's lot will be when you add this thing to it.
Yes.
So again, we're just adding more free space to the lot, so it's not going to impact setback or any spatial lock.
And what's the square footage of the home, the southern?
I said, no, on me, I'm going to say it's one five five sixty plus the L, so probably talking probably, you know, just under two thousand square foot footprint. Right, so I mean, you think of that house to be, I mean, you think of fifty cent space, you know, that's four one fifty, literally more than double the size of that house, still before complying with all setbacks and green space.
It is easier to understand if that where it's identified as vacant, if you put those uh, those figures in the lot to the north, because this isn't just a subdivision, it's also a merger.
Right.
And I think when we look at the chart, we're seeing vacant, thinking that's what's left of the subdivision, but the remainder of that scenario is that it becomes part of a merged lot.
I'm not creating any building laws.
No, 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 that's what we're saying, it's, it's a merger as well as a subdivision. What's the subdivision? The.
I understand the merger.
Well, when when they take the whole lot and they extract this part of it out of it, that subdivides, and then it's immediately merged with the lot to the north. Can we go back to that?
So you're, you're, maybe your ordinance doesn't have a, some ordinance that will have, you know, a lot boundary line adjustment category in their ordinance. Uh, but technically, what we're doing is you have to take a piece of land, you have to subdivide it, and you take, you know, what you stand on it, if you stay in order or something like that. So technically, there's a subdivision under your ordinance, or as well as a, two lots subdivision. But when we're done, there's no new law being created, we're shifting that line over.
Well, Kurt, I get your point totally, but, um, I'm personally going to have to say that we have to rely on the expertise, is this, and allow, um, subdivision in Joe's statements as it is, well, without a variance being necessary. I don't know that we have any authority to supersede his determination, because only mortgage in its entirety gives him that authority.
Well, our general mortgage does give us the ability to look at the harmonious nature of decisions.
That's true.
And and for me, there's, there's potential disparity, and I think they're easy to leave. And I I would like to see the revision of the table, and there's a reason I'm doing this, there is not, I mean, you're working with four voting members, and I'm on front. So I would like to see a potential alternative and and the.
The, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we, this is not the first and final, you know, we actually had multiple sketches prepared, sat with the applicant, the applicant kept telling us, no, we get the bank, we get the bank, so this is their ways to make the boundary line, that north-south boundary line, that thing.
I understand their wish. I understand their wish.
No, uh, they, you know, right, so I just, you know, you know, this wasn't just, hey, just draw that line, and, you know, it doesn't look good, we don't like it, you know, we just.
Sure. I mean, if if you're comfortable going to a vote with that. Anything more? We need nothing with regard to. We need nothing with regard to secrets. So we can.
You'll need a public hearing. Nobody on.
So. We need to open the public hearing. Which. The public hearing is now. There's no one I want.
No.
Most public hearing. So. Questionals is. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I wish to make a motion through a press conference in twenty twenty one dash eleven, as written and presented.
We have a second to the motion.
I'll second the motion, motion.
Call to vote?
Discussion.
Of discussion.
You're doing great.
Is there further discussion? So I, so I'd like to see confirmation on the open space numbers and the. And the merge numbers, right, where, which are currently N A. And I, and, you know, I would encourage the applicant to think about a lot line adjustment. That doesn't create such an irregular, uh, such an irregular lot. And such a irregular lot of such. I understand exactly. I guess I should ask, did you want to consider making that part of the motion or modifying? Oh, because that makes it additional, I'm not making it additional. But I'm not. That's why I asked. Right, yeah, okay.
And I would mention that would certainly be. The significant portion that irregularities associated with. Downstate property, property that's on my. So in terms of a more. Regular. Layout of property. A severe restriction because of political. Associated with that geographic piece.
It's, it's the flag shaped property that I'm, that's, that's a concern. I don't know if there's anything to do there. It's the flag shaped property in terms, yeah, okay. So with respect to motions there. We have motion and without the second. Is there any further discussion? Discussion.
Reg Carter.
Yes.
Or Erich.
No.
Roderick's month.
Yes.
Rick Perry.
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I would like to thank you.
Thanks, yeah, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, we do have some other business that we did review and discuss in the. Re meeting a little bit. Specialize a few things, thank you things official. So December board meeting is the twenty eighth. Appears like a couple of us, Kurt and myself, may be in attendance via Zoom. So, and then we do have three other members that can be here. I guess the only thing I would say is if. We do identify that one of us is going to be missing. The potential application that may be coming back to us should definitely be notified that.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a full board, that, that may change, change things for that, I mean, or at least for that application's attendance. So that's number one. I guess number two, we had discussed, Rick had. Handled his first. Application as vice chair. I guess we don't have anything official in our, in our. Process for that board wise, but. Thank you. Third item, we talked about, actually, she had mentioned. Potential in January for us to receive some more. Official board procedures after city attorney looks at it.
Yeah, my goal is to circulate it to the board in December and give you guys that a month to sit with it, review it before, just before the January meeting to discuss and.
Okay, yeah, I think that was what Rick was asking for, that we maybe get that in advance so that we can review it. So that's, that's good. One other item, skipping my mind right now that we were talking about. Yeah, advertising for, for new members, so we are two, two members short, once. Alaretta's appointment is official, I guess, to the full membership of the board. I guess we're still two members short regardless.
And we made that request.
For Alaretta?
Yes.
Yes, so Ethan, if you wanna, like, we, we drafted a letter, Ethan had discussed it with Jim. So we do have a draft letter to request that appointment that is pending Jim's approval and signature.
I fully support that appointment. I guess if, I don't know if we're, if we're now looking for, given the mayor's. Discussion with the plane department, we're looking for the, he's looking for the full board's.
I think he is.
Or, or recommendation.
Yeah, but looking for board recommendations. So yes, if you, if there's any, if the board agrees with that suggestion, then we can move that forward up the flagpole. And, and then if it is the, the will of the board for that position, we'll put it on the next agenda that we can. Recommendation. And that, the same thing, same process when we do advertise, we'll pass forward all the letters of interest that we do receive. The board, the board will be able to review. Ultimately, the, the mayor will receive a letter from the chair. Covering the board's decision, and that would be the official recommendation from the planning board. For that position, for those positions.
Script would be through application. Asking us to, like, to.
That might change, I guess, depending on the total of numbers of letter of interest. However, there's been no formal determination of how that process should go, so it ultimately can be up to the board of how you want to deliver. Those potential members, preferably not just straight open. But that's up to, up to the board.
So I don't, I don't think we have any past policy in this regard to give us guidance. I can tell you that. My past, being on the board for a number of years, either. Things were suggested through the board, through the planning of the engineering department, and then the recommendations typically used to come out of the departments. Engineering department to the mayor's office, you know, input in the background, it was an official thing, it was at the board table. Other times it came, it came back to the chair. It was mentioned of, you know, this individual's interested, what do you think, but it never came. And, and maybe other members were asked of their opinion, but it was never something official at the board table like this. So. With that said, I guess out of the book, I think support. Support, when I have a poll on, you know, things as it moves forward of recommendations that goes to the mayor's office, I mean. Or are we just looking for a general discussion and a consensus and then? I as chair, you know, have a, you know, like a letter recommendation on behalf of the board, just.
I'm wondering, Jim. Specifically, what information will be needed to the board that will serve as basis?
So there's, yeah, there's two things. First, we talked about, as we talked about earlier. The address, so figuring out what ward they're from, because we are deficient to the wards. The other thing that we are requesting in that letter of interest is any relevant qualifications that would, you know, be different, whether it's a different perspective or any. Career experience or anything like that that could bring value to the board review. So that will be what we have for the board to review. So no, no formal application, but.
So I, I don't ever recall being asked. As a, the board ever being asked what we, you know, to vet new members, because the mayor appointed somebody and that person showed up and.
Quite frankly, it was, if, if a ward, ward member was asked, it was an, it was an unofficial discussion with a planning department member or the city engineer or someone just.
Yeah.
You know, you walk into the office, this type of discussion.
Yeah, and frankly, I would be uncomfortable weighing in on what is, what is essentially a political appointee, right?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this is well intentioned, but perhaps.
Yeah.
Not appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's, if there's any feedback, we could, once again, we can pass that forward for recommendations, if that is.
I would, I would generally, my, my feeling is I would tend to agree with you without having a more formalized process on how you evaluate applications that come forward here.
And should we?
In a district or.
And.
The need for representation, you know, across the city.
Yeah.
You know, trying to, I'm sure that person has a genuine interest before the point is made.
Yeah.
Most of that sounds like it's beyond, you know, approved. As well, probably should.
And I also think that. While we desire board members that have an interest and experience in planning. Any member of the city should be able to be appointed and, and that, and our board should step into.
I actually, when I came on the board, out of curiosity, just went to. Was it, maybe it was in the city bylaws, I don't remember where. And it was very clear, it just said, the mayor appoints the planning board.
Yeah.
Nothing else. The mayor appoints. And I said, oh, okay, because I was wondering, you know, if there was anything else involved. When I was asked if I would be interested. And it was just very clearly. You know, our common courtesy would be that the mayor would consult with. The chairman of the board and say, you know, just to make sure that there isn't something. There isn't some kind of a history with the person that the mayor is considering or putting, you know.
Right.
Or has. Picked, but after that, the responsibility of the board, it's not our responsibility as it stands right now. And that's the way it's been. And so unless we're gonna go revise the bylaws of the city to come up with a new. Where we pick our own members, that would be a big change. That would be a big change.
Change, as I understand this, right. The mayor is looking for a recommendation. I think what we're trying to understand is appropriate for this board to make that recommendation. Ultimately, the. Mayor would still make the recommendation to the council for their approval, as I understand the process.
There's no question. This is simply a recommendation to the mayor's office. The mayor's office still is the official, you know, final. Recommendation to the common council for ultimate approval. I can, I can say this, I do think that there is some definite well intentioned thought behind this. Request. I can tell you that in discussions with the former zoning chair. Having understood generally, you know, they, the zoning board had a, a member that was. Turned down at the, the mayor's recommendation at the common council level that created a, created some type of concern. But that created concern at the board, at the zoning board level, which. You know, created some further discussion and discussion, I believe, at public hearings and, you know, at the common council level. So I think there's. A thought of wanting to try, to try to avoid that potentially from the, from the mayor's office and make sure that there's some currents now from the board, but then. Moves up through, then there's a little more.
Drive a chance.
Yeah, collective thought. So, so let's. Oh, I think that's the history of what we're seeing right now. We just happen to be, be the board with two members short and, you know.
Why you would not?
Ultimately, you know, it's with the board, you know. Ideally, it shouldn't be political, right? We're trying to independent board members making decisions for the. For the better interest of the city. So hopefully, the politics, regardless of which layer anyway, don't play a role into the recommendations. I, I believe this is a good intention from the, the mayor trying to solicit, you know, the board's opinion. And ultimately, though, it's up to, it's up to the board and how they want. This is, we're just passing the message that we got. So if this is something, once again, the board's not comfortable with or would like to keep with how it's done previously, or any recommendations on how to potentially prove. We can still pass that forward back up and make that.
How about, how about this, since we don't have an official process for this, clearly the board has a little bit of question, and I do too, about. Voting on something without some type of process on what we're voting on, or what we're viewing. Can you talk to the mayor's office and see if we can go back even to where, how the planning department or the engineering department handled it before? Still do interviews, still collect letters of interest, you know, if the department wants to reach out to individual members and. Have a more informal discussion, chair, and then you take it back to the, to the, back to the mayor's office accordingly. See if that, that's acceptable.
Well.
Less, a little less.
Just throwing it out there, just so. The planning board is not, you know, somehow starting to assume. Responsibility and control over who. A member is, you know, if the mayor were to just, you know, once the mayor has names and, you know, that have gone through the departments and the planning department and. If the mayor is so inclined, come and just talk to us about the people being concerned, and just ask us, are there any thoughts about? You know, if the mayor would want to do that. In, in a totally informal way. But again, you know, I'm talking back to the class I took about, you know, planning board members talking about anything that is not part of the agenda. And that is just a huge no-no. We are not, we're not allowed to discuss among ourselves, we're not allowed to discuss among other people. I mean, there are a lot of things about being on a planning board where what we do is right here, and that's it. That's the end of our responsibility. And so I just feel like that's wading into something that. You know, there are rules about it. And I don't remember if that specifically was discussed, you know, the planning board becoming involved in the process of. Selecting new members. But I know there are rules and I suspect that if we go and look at the rules, it will tell us whether or not we're even allowed to.
So.
Fundamentally, this is the planning board being entrusted by the city council with this responsibility. And that is based on recommendation by the mayor to the city council, and that's where the decision process.
So I think the best, I, I, I agree, I think the, the best way to get members that are effective. Is for us to talk to people in the community that we think would be effective.
Yeah, people might want to do it, yeah. Go through the process, absolutely. Yes, absolutely, and I. Yes, absolutely, and I believe we're allowed to do that.
Absolutely, because I don't want to be, I don't want an agenda, you know, that says discussion of.
Yeah, no, that's not our job.
Right, or or something like that, or we should push.
Because then we become a.
Members up.
If we do that, we become a political body, and we are not supposed to be a political body in any way, shape, or form, that's why things are, that's why there are so many rules defining.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're not even allowed to walk out of here and just talk about, two people are not allowed to walk out of here and talk about the meeting we just had with respect to the agenda, I mean, the rules are really clear. We are not to be a political body.
Also changes the harmony of the discussion. Something maybe a whole of this adds to being considered by the board.
Yeah, no, it's, no, it's just not, that's, that would make us a political body, and. There are a lot of rules out there that make it clear that that's what we are not supposed, obviously, it's a political appointment because the mayor does it. And then passes it with the common council. But once we're on the board, there is no political. Responsibility.
Can't pass forward all.
We can all just back up a little bit.
And then we can go from there, so but the point is, regardless of how it gets done, which we'll we'll talk and we'll figure all that out. We are looking at our ties, so they are, you know, no matter whatever, however the system ultimately shakes out to be, if you do have any individuals in mind.
Just put our something in front, just like everyone else, hiring.
Is that also?
Money going higher, no money.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you just won't be able to put a bonus on there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking for civic minded individuals.
Is that, is that also a change, has that been done in short?
That's, that's how I, that's how I think.
We used to advertise that only for.
I I have not seen it done. Of recent, but it it is definitely how many. Came into the certain.
It's specific.
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, absolutely.
Good, that is, we can, we'll, we'll definitely bring bring your points up and then try to get some clarity, so that the board feels comfortable. Everyone, everyone is aware of what type of process is to move forward with the hopeful eventual appointees.
I would assume our goal is to fill this for the end of the year or as soon as possible.
So we'll, we'll put it out, obviously, holiday season can impact that a little bit, you know, people's availability, or, but we'll keep it. We keep it rolling and wait till we get, you know, if we, if we only get one applicant, one, one's a middle, one person interested. Or if we get two, or we will, I think it'll all depend on what kind of interest we get back, but.
Also, in general, I don't, you had mentioned that you have a. Person who is doing this, the advertising outreach. What was, what was the title of that?
Community engagement coordinator.
Community engagement coordinator. You know, I don't know, I don't know whether advertisement, but she. Who is it again?
It's Courtney, if I pronounce her last name wrong, I apologize, Courtney, it's Courtney, isn't it her?
My name.
Mine's a liar.
Mine's a liar, okay, didn't I, I'm. I'm assuming she can communicate and reach out to groups and and see if there's city residents that might be interested. And whether whether it's any of the of the organized community groups within the wards or, you know, aderent professionals or, you know what I mean, any.
What do you think?
Actually, honestly, that that is where I thought it used to start.
Exactly, speaking with the council.
Um, one to the, that would make a lot of sense.
We have had some applicants from wards one and two in the past couple of years that have been. Or thinking civic. That would make.
What's gonna cast gas in that wide? Yeah, see who wants to be involved. Okay. Any other items or other? Points of discussion, anything from planning?
I want to say in regards to this meeting, there was issued the live stream, however, we can record it, we'll upload that on YouTube as soon as it's from, we can download it from the cloud. So it's not currently on YouTube channel page right now, but we do have it recording.
Okay.
That's the only other thing I would add, and if anyone went back to look at this later tonight or tomorrow, I, it all depends on when it actually, the recording. Is done being processed nicely.
Okay. And just to follow up on Kurt's one last question, he had the pre meeting, any. Planning zoning items that are ongoing right now, those are all probably not coming back. To the public or that until after the first year.
I would say that is.
Sound better, right? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I guess there's no other items, there's another motion to adjourn. Okay, all. Second by our.
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. I didn't see anybody not raise their hand, so have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, Thanksgiving.
Great, congratulations.
Yeah, Rick.
Reggie got a promotion, but she's no rate.
Got the deck and the con. Oh. So you met my husband.
Yeah, he was great.
Yeah, he loved it, he was.